This meeting is called to order. We'd like to welcome everyone to the June 9th, 2014 meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Education. And we have quite a few students here tonight. I'm sure they all know how many days of school are left, only what, two and a half? And so I'm sure everybody's looking forward to summer here. And our next meeting will be after school's out, so take this opportunity just to say, "Have a great summer." Everybody enjoy their time off and be ready to go when we open the doors again in August. So have a great summer. But it's good to have each of you here tonight. And we want to recognize a couple commissioners that are here with us tonight. Our vice chairman is Jeff Branch, he's over here to my left. And also Michael Brooks. So let's give them a round of applause, please. We'd like to thank the commission for being a big part of helping us with the William Willnor Middle School and just helping us in so many ways. We have a good collaborative relationship with them and we're very thankful for that. We want to move along here. At this point, I'm going to ask our finance director, Mr. David Johnson, to do the invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father, I want to thank you for a wonderful day in this great nation we live. Bless the administrators, teachers, and staff that work so hard for the success of the students. Please be with us, board, help them make decisions that will be pleasing to you and in the best interests of the students. And above all, bless the students as they prepare for a summer break. Let it be relaxing and safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'd also like to mention that Mrs. Coffey is at another meeting tonight, so she is not with us this evening. Next, we have the pledge of allegiance. And I have a list of Gamewell Elementary School Student Council members, so let me call these names out and they'll come forward. They'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We have Katie Booth, Abby Braswell, Justin Holloway, Aiden Crook, Alina Johnson, Ethan McLean, and Lucas Watson. So if everyone will please stand, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to thank the student council members from Gamewell Elementary for being here tonight. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. And the board has had that for a few days and had an opportunity to look it over, to hear a motion that we approve the agenda as has been presented.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have minutes from our regular meeting on May 12th and also minutes from the May 12th closed session that we had at the end of our regular meeting. The board has had an opportunity to look over those, to hear a motion, we approve the minutes for the regular and the closed session meeting that took place on May 12th.
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the May 12th regular board meeting and closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Next, we have our honors and recognitions. And we truly enjoy seeing the artwork in the hallways and we truly enjoy this part of our program and our meeting. And tonight, we're going to be recognizing not only art students, but we're going to be recognizing a good number of teachers who have earned their master's degrees and doctorate degrees. And we're also going to be recognizing the rocket, the 10th anniversary of the radio station down at South Caldwell High School. So at this time, the board's going to move down front. We want to congratulate those that are award winners tonight. And I'm going to call on Libby Brown, our community relations director, to introduce those.
Good evening, Board Chairman Daryl Pennell, Board members, and Dr. Stone. We have enjoyed the beauty of student artwork in the hallway of the education center all school year. And we will continue to appreciate the artistic abilities of Caldwell County students this summer, even though they will be enjoying summer break very soon. Tonight, we will recognize students from 11 different schools in the district whose artwork will be on display at the education center in the gallery, our art gallery that you have enjoyed already this evening, from June until August. So these youngsters will have their artwork on display at the education center for almost three months. So congratulations to the students on their art selection at the school level. They were selected by their art teachers at the school level and the entry into the education center art gallery. So as I call your name, please come forward and receive your certificate of recognition from the Board of Education members and from Dr. Stone. So we're going to start with Bayton Elementary School, Madeline Wisnutt. Madeline here this evening? Hi. Hi, ma'am. Jenny Green is here this evening, and she is the art teacher, and Jason Teef Tiller is the principal. Okay, and now we're going to Davenport A+ School, Kayden Berry. Kalia Haynes, I'm sorry, this is Jade Guerrero. So Jade first. Okay, so is Jade with us? I didn't think Jade could be here. And then we're going to move to Kalia Haynes. Okay, so there's Kalia's artwork and Davenport A+ School, is Kalia here? Okay, we just have with us Kayden tonight. Dudley Shoals Elementary, Jalissa Osborne. Okay. Okay, the art teacher is Alexis Buchanan and Gwen Roop is principal. Granite Falls Elementary, we have Isabella Kerr. Isabella, is that her? Okay. Okay, and Chris Green cannot be here this evening, he's the principal, and Millie Hefner is the art teacher. Then we have Oak Hill School, Alessa Burton. So is Alessa here? And Lonnie Higgs is the art teacher, Renee Clark is principal. There's Alessa. Okay, let's do one more school. Saw Mills Elementary, Anna Klein. Is Anna Klein here this evening? And Brad Wright is the art teacher, he's with us this evening. And Lowell Rogers, who's also here, is the principal for Saw Mills Elementary. So this is our first group of artists. If you want to get right here in the center, let's let mom and dad and family members take a photo. Okay, then we're going to do a few middle schools. We have Granite Falls Middle and Madison Maloney. Madison here this evening? I know Bill Schreiber is principal and Mary Rezo, art teacher. Hudson Middle School, we have Isabella Crater. Kelly Woody is the art teacher and Bill Griffin is the principal. It's Isabella. Then William Willnor Middle School, we have Sydney Grogan. Haley Laws. And Wiley Akers, the art teacher is here this evening, as well as Lisa Vaughn, principal. Very proud of these students. Now we're going to move to the high school level. And it's South Caldwell High School, Kendell Church. And Jamie Stewart is the art teacher and Mike Peake is principal. And we have another student from a high school, West Caldwell High School, Shelby Bishop. So is Shelby here this evening? How's Shelby? Okay, and Jeff Link and Kevin Abey are with West Caldwell High School. So we have, this completes our group of students in the education center art gallery this summer, so parents, please have at it, get your photos. Next, we're going to turn our attention to employees. Congratulations to educators, media coordinators, support personnel, instructional facilitators, and administrators for your hard work and commitment to further your own education. Forty employees in the district made a decision a few years ago to earn another degree in education, and this year, they completed that goal. They have earned an additional degree, which enhances their ability to implement procedures effectively and reflect on the best practices in the teaching and administrative areas. So it's my pleasure to introduce some of our employees who have reached an additional degree in education. We're going to start with Jessica Anthony from South Caldwell. Completed a master's degree in curriculum instruction specialist from Appalachian State University and an advanced degree in school administration. Joshua Blackburn, is he here this evening? Laura Brinkley from Granite Falls Middle, completed a master's degree in administration from Gardner Web. Renee Chandler from West Caldwell, completed a master's degree in secondary mathematics, I'm sorry, secondary degree in special education from the American College of Education. So she is in special education. Kimberly Clark from South Caldwell, completed a master's degree in curriculum instruction from Appalachian State University. Is Kimberly with us this evening? I see Mike Peake, but I don't, okay. Vicky Cornett, I know Vicky is here from Dudley Shoals. She completed a master's degree in instructional technology specialist computer, computer education endorsement from Appalachian State University. And you're going to hear that a lot tonight, Appalachian State University. Amanda Craven from Hudson Elementary, completed a master's degree in elementary education from Appalachian State University. We're going to pause for just a second to let the kids take pictures of their parents. Mark Demeter from West Caldwell. Is Mark here this evening, Jeff? Okay, he's not with us. Tony Greer from Whitnall, completed a master's degree in library science from Appalachian State University. David Johnson, but not the one who said the invocation, we have another David Johnson assistant, from Dudley Shoals Elementary, completed a master's degree in reading from Appalachian State University. Stephanie Keller from Granite Falls Middle, completed a master's degree in library science from Appalachian State University. Rachel Cozer from South Caldwell, completed a master's degree in curriculum instructional specialist from Appalachian State University. So I think Rachel's here, is she? Oh, she's not here, okay. Bethany McQuary from Hudson Elementary, I think yes, completed a library science from, degree from Appalachian State University. Audrey Mood from Valmead, completed a master's degree in special education from the University of Louisville. Okay, that's different. Okay, we're going to pause here before we go to the next page. So you guys will move to the center. Then we have Golden Bernard Moore from William Willnor Middle School, completed a master's degree in middle grades language arts from Appalachian State University. I don't think she's here this evening, okay? Donna Nichols from Dudley Shoals Elementary, completed a master's degree in instructional technology specialist computer, computer education endorsement from Appalachian State University. Melissa Phil yaw from Colletsville, completed a master's degree in reading from Appalachian State University. And Mr. Sims, you may know the next young lady I announced. Whitney Sims Braswell from the Early College High School, completed a master's degree in curriculum instructional specialist from Appalachian State University. And I know you're very proud of her. Katie Suits from Hudson Middle School, completed a master's degree in middle grades mathematics from Appalachian State University. Katie here this evening? Okay, Katie isn't with us. Sarah Starnes, and I'm not sure if she's here, I saw the principal earlier, she said she wasn't sure if she can make it tonight. We also have John Sullivan and Melissa Sullivan from South Caldwell. Are they here this evening, before I announce them? Okay, they're not here. Okay. Where do you want me to start, with Sarah? Okay, let's go back to Sarah. Sarah Starnes from High Brighton, completed a master's degree in secondary mathematics from Appalachian State University, and she couldn't be here because of babysitting. John Sullivan from South Caldwell High School, completed a master's degree in instructional technology specialist computer, computer education endorsement from Appalachian State. Melissa Sullivan from South Caldwell High School, completed a master's degree in the same degree, instructional technology specialist computer, computer education endorsement from Appalachian State University. Okay, I'm going to go down now to Diane West. Diane, I think is here. Okay, Diane West from Dudley Shoals, completed a master's degree in the same, maybe these people in instructional technology, an instructional technology specialist computer education endorsement from Appalachian State University. Now Ronnie Williams. Maybe the rain kept them away, right? From West Caldwell, completed a master's degree in English, a second language, from UNC Charlotte. Okay, so that's really, there are a few others who were listed here that I did not announce who were unable to attend. So we're going to move to the advanced degrees. Okay, let's do. It's a good time to be inside. Definitely a good time to be at the board meeting, yeah. Okay, now we have some educators and administrators who have completed an administration degree, and it's called superintendent administration degree. And I'm going to start with Dawn Comer. Dawn, if you will come forward. And Dawn is at Granite Falls Middle School. She has earned an advanced degree in school administration superintendent from Appalachian State University. Then we have Deborah Miller. And Deborah Miller is at Dudley Shoals Elementary School, and she has earned an advanced degree in school administration superintendent from Appalachian State University. And we have the principal at Hudson Elementary School, Andy Poole, has completed his degree, advanced degree in school administration superintendent from Appalachian State University. So we'll get a photo. And we've saved these last two individuals because they have reached one of the highest degrees, or if not the highest degree in education. It is the pinnacle of degrees in education, their doctorate. And we're going to start with Mr. Bill Griffin, who is currently the principal at Hudson Middle School. He earned a doctorate in school administrator superintendent from Gardner Web University. So we should now call him Dr. Bill Griffin. We also have one lady at the education center who has completed her doctorate in school administrator superintendent, also from Gardner Web University. I think you two were in school together. They also worked here and kept their hours at Hudson Middle and the education center, Dr. Lisa Widener, who is our Title I Director. So we're very proud of Lisa. Yeah, the two doctors, give a hug. So we can get a picture of our two new doctors in the building and out in the district? Would either one of you like to say anything about how grueling the process is? Okay, well, before we move on to our last recognition, since you did make the effort to be here, and we know how busy it is this last week of school, but you did, these are the people who have worked very hard. Please, all of you stand again. We'd like to give you a round of applause, all of you who have obtained master's degrees, advanced degrees, or your doctorate. So if you'll please stand. So if you'll please stand. Thank you. It's a lot of hard work, and we're very proud of you. Okay, now we're gonna turn our attention to something that's a little different from earning your doctorate degree or your master's degree. Ten years ago, at 7:00 AM on Tuesday, October the 12th, the airwaves carried school announcements on the Caldwell County Schools newest FM stations located on the campus of South Caldwell High School. FM channel 100.1 and FM channel 92.9, both low-powered, non-commercial stations licensed to the Caldwell County School System. In ten years' time, the two FM stations continue to broadcast announcements, but have developed into much more, serving students and residents of Caldwell County with talk shows, school, district in-depth coverage, student DJs, and a curriculum for student involvement. During these changes, one thing has been constant, Jim Dietrich, English teacher at South Caldwell and manager, producer, announcer, talk show host, sports announcer, and much, much more for 100.1 and 92.9, The Rocket. So Jim Dietrich, if you'll please come forward, we want to celebrate your 10th anniversary at South Caldwell High School with a two Caldwell County School radius.
I'm really pleased to be here, and I know it's kind of like a cliche, but I really do stand on the shoulders of other people who have certainly deserved recognition. Jean and Dean Norman, Ray Green in the tech department with their incredible ingenuity. Former Superintendent Dr. McNeil, who actually believed in this wild idea that we had. Dr. Stone, for your continued support. Libby Brown, for her energy and wonderful ideas. And of course, least but certainly not least, my students, who certainly keep me on my technology toes. So, I really feel honored to be entrusted with this project. It constantly challenges me, especially to see where it can go. The radio station can be a wonderful valuable asset to the school system. It can communicate all the wonderful things we do in our schools. And with more community involvement, we can hopefully become, truly become, the voice of Caldwell County. I mean, that's my vision, and I hope with your continued support, I can make that happen. Thank you very much. And just to make sure that you stay on our mind, I have Rocket T-shirts for each one of you.
Very nice catch, wasn't it? We do have someone, Ronnie Williams, at the door. The storm and things may have created some delays for everyone, so we do want to recognize you, Ronnie. Ronnie is one of our teachers at West Caldwell High School, who completed a master's degree in English as a second language, which is different from some of the other degrees you heard tonight. And Ronnie completed his degree, not at Appalachian State University, but UNC Charlotte. So it's a little different, so we're glad Ronnie came in. See, he has evidence of the weather all over.
Can we get one of you, you want to come back? Congratulations, Ronnie.
Oh yeah, that would be cute. Please introduce your wife. Thank you. Thank you.
We want to thank you for being here this evening. If you want to slip out at this point, this would be a good opportunity. You're welcome to stay, but have a great summer.
Don't forget your umbrellas, too, if you had one, you might need it.
I'm sure they'll remember. Agenda tonight is public comment, and as of 4:30 this afternoon, we had received no public comments, so we'll move along. And I'd like to recognize at this time, our Superintendent, Dr. Steve Stone.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for public information tonight, or for board information, I've invited Ms. Teresa Branch to come forward, and Ms. Branch will do that. Ms. Branch is the Executive Director for Smart Start. She'll probably give you a little history of Smart Start in Caldwell County, but one of the things that we want to encourage folks who may be watching this is that we still have vacancies in the Smart Start program and in the pre-K 4 program, so I'm sure Ms. Branch will tell you how to call and get your child enrolled in that. So, welcome, Ms. Branch. Tell us a little bit about Smart Start.
All right, thank you. Chairman, panel, members of the board, Dr. Stone, I'm delighted to be here this evening to provide an update from Caldwell County Smart Start. Smart Start is an early childhood initiative designed to ensure that children, that all children, start school healthy and ready to succeed. And one of the programs that Smart Start administers is called NC Pre-K. NC Pre-K provides high-quality educational experiences to eligible four-year-olds the year prior to kindergarten. So we're looking for children who will turn four by August 31st. Currently, in this school year, we have five sites in Caldwell County Schools that serve NC Pre-K children. Baton Elementary, Gamal Elementary, Kings Creek Elementary, Valmead Elementary, and Whittanau Elementary. In addition to those five sites, we have four other sites in the community that also serve NC Pre-K children. A New Beginning, Bright Beginning, Bernhardt Creative Beginnings, and North Side Children's Learning Center. The Caldwell County Smart Start Board met last week and approved three additional sites from Caldwell County Schools to serve four-year-olds in the program for 2014-2015. Dudley Shoals Elementary, Hudson Elementary, and both these sites are current pre-K sites, but not serving NC Pre-K children. They're currently serving children with special needs, tuition students, and maybe some students who are on a donor tuition voucher. Also, we're hoping to add Wes Lenore as a third site of the new three sites from Caldwell County Schools. So that means we'll have eight sites in Caldwell County Schools. We're also adding one more community site, that's Countryside Childcare in Granite Falls. So we're very, very excited that we're expanding pre-K opportunities for children throughout the county, because there are probably 500 to 600 children in Caldwell County that are eligible. We're looking for children from low-income families, or whose parents serve in the military, or children with special needs. So, we currently have 155 applicants, so we need your help in spreading the word to let folks know about this wonderful opportunity. Because the way that Caldwell County is gonna gain additional slots from the state is active applications. So we just want your help and the folks in, throughout Caldwell County Schools, to help spread the word. Applications are available on the Smart Start website at CaldwellSmartStart.org and at all NC Pre-K sites.
Tell us the requirements again, so in case someone's listening. So if somebody has a child, the requirements then, four-year-old?
Four-year-old by August 31st, low-income families, or parents serving in the military, or a child with special needs. All right. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and hope you can help us in spreading the word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a word of comment, too. Ms. Branch has been the Executive Director of Smart Start now for six months, maybe, Teresa? Nine months. And I serve on that board as a number of folks in the community, and that board is certainly very appreciative of the efforts that she's made with Smart Start. It has really turned that organization around and really getting their focus back on serving children. So thank you for that, Ms. Branch. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, for Board Action, Item 2, Approval of the Official Depository for Caldwell County Schools. We have talked about this in the Finance Committee, and the recommendation coming from administration would be that we move our depository from, well, to First Citizens of Lenore. And we have three reasons for doing that. Basically, we'll be moving the funds that come flow through the state. We would be using First Citizens basically because they are the one bank that did step up and help us with financing for William Lenore. They were actually the only bank who put in that bid for that, which we felt like was a really great commitment, a great statement that they supported public schools and Caldwell County Schools. They also have guaranteed less fees than the current bank that we bank with, and they have also guaranteed greater fraud protection. And that's something that we have been very concerned about, as we hear more and more about accounts and companies who've had their internet security breached. We're very comfortable that First Citizens has got a much better plan for us. So I'd like to recommend that we officially declare First Citizens Bank the official depository for Caldwell County Schools.
Do I hear a motion that we approve First Citizens as the official depository for Caldwell County School System?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve First Citizens as the official depository for Caldwell County Schools.
Second?
Any comments, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the start date for that will be as soon as we close out accounts here, and the Finance Department can make that happen. June is a tough time on the Finance Department because they're closing out so much, so we'll leave that up to Mr. Johnson to determine. For Item 3, I'm gonna ask Carol and Katrina if they could possibly come forward to help with this. We do have Board Policy 3460, which is the graduation requirements, and there are some changes to it. There are two major changes that I will hit and then let them explain. On Page 1, the Bullet 3, or Number 3, we have eliminated, or the recommendation is to eliminate the high school graduation project. And a little bit later on, there's some name of course changes, but a little bit later on, on Page 6, there is under B, the second paragraph under B would be to change the amount or the percentage that the EOC test results count for, from 25% to 20%. Those are the major changes, others are minor. And I know Dr. Burns and Katrina have been talking with staff members about this, and this is a big discussion we need to have here, or some conversation. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Burns.
I'll do the introduction. This, we have to make periodic changes to the graduation requirements. And this one, since we knew it would precipitate a lot of discussion, we wanted to bring this part up for 30-day. And probably will come back to you again, because we received the information from the North Carolina School Boards Association that keeps our policies updated, and they were working on the same thing. So essentially, other than this part we're talking about tonight, they were doing the very same thing we were doing. So you'll see it, we all agree what needs to be done on that one. I think the part, though, that needed some discussion was the graduation project, and we've had a committee working on that. We look at it every year to see what's the pros and the cons and so forth. And since I was not a member, I did not listen to that discussion, I asked Katrina McGowan to come and go through that discussion with you, and I think she's brought her backup with her. You've got four of the five high school principals and several of the committee members here. So I told Dr. Stone, if there's 50,000 questions, they can answer 49,999 of them. I'll do the one on that one and so forth. So we wanted to give you a chance to answer some questions tonight, and then think about it, and maybe at the next meeting. Well, in 30 days, that will come back again with some things from the state, and hopefully... The one reason we're doing this this early is the Early College and the Middle College start before the other schools, and we need to give them some direction. So that's the reason for doing this one first.
Chairman, panel, Dr. Stone and members of the board, I've put together a short slideshow presentation. Just wanna make sure my clicker works. Dr. Stone has already alluded to several of the changes within the policy, and we'll spend most of our time this afternoon, or this evening, talking about the graduation project and why we are recommending what we are recommending. But we are with the alignment of names. North Carolina, the Department of Public Instruction have changed our math course title, so we no longer have the Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2 in our school system. We have Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3, and we wanted to clean that language up. We actually started Math 1 last year, and so it currently applies to our sophomores and freshmen. And then the last change during this past school year, the State Board of Education changed their policy about EOCs, and they dropped the percentage that EOCs could count to a minimum of 20%. Since we were already in the middle of a school year, we did not want to change on our students or teachers. We left as our current policy of 25%. However, we had discussion in the High School Curriculum Council, we had many discussions in high school principal meetings about, do we change, do we drop it to 20%, do we leave it for 25%? And this would really count for all of our final exams, whether it's a North Carolina final exam, a CTE post-assessment, a teacher-made exam, or an EOC. And we wanted to be consistent across the board, and we really wanted to err on the side of students, and we felt like 20% was more appropriate for that percentage. So that's why that change is in there. As Dr. Burns mentioned earlier today, we do periodically, we look at the programs and initiatives that we have in our school. This is part of our continuous improvement cycle, part of our strategic plan, part of that accreditation that we get from the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, is that we're always looking at what we're doing to determine, is this really in the best interest of our students and of our teachers? And so that's one of the reasons that we decided now is a good time to look at the graduation project. We decided it was best to form a committee, so we had a study committee of about 25 representatives. Some were teachers, some were administrators. We represented various disciplines, so it wasn't just English teachers or just principals. We wanted to have a variety of staff members involved in this process. And so we met throughout March, April, and May to really sit down and discuss, why did we initially start with the graduation project? Why did we add it several years ago? What are we doing now? Is it working? Is it not working? And what are our next steps? So we started off in the committee, and we looked at the history. We actually started planning for the graduation project back in 2007, the 2007-2008 school year, and we planned for a year before we implemented it, the following year in 2008-2009. And then that year after, you were gracious enough to approve it as a graduation requirement for that graduating class. Since then, we've seen a lot of changes in the graduation project. We changed the grading initially. It was just, it counted as a student's, in the senior English class as a final exam. Then we moved it to a graduation requirement, and then it became pass/fail. So we've seen a lot of changes in that aspect. We've also saw the change from it just being a senior year project to, we spread it out over the two years, so we had students writing a research paper in their junior English class, and then they would come in that senior English class, and they would finish up with their product, their portfolio, and their presentation. And we also, we were having some issues along the way with mentors, and we initially had asked students to spend 15 hours with the mentor. We were struggling with that, so we reduced that aspect of the project to five hours with the mentor, but 15 hours of a product. And we did many other things along the way to try to give schools the flexibility to make the graduation project work within the school. Some of our advanced placement courses did things that were more curriculum-based, to fall in line with what they needed to do for the college board. We moved, one school did presentations during the day, while some of our others still kept it at night. So we tried to work with the schools to give them that flexibility, so that it could be successful for them. And along the way in our committee, we started really looking at the successes and the concerns that we had about the graduation project. I think many of us, if not all of us, have sat in a room and judged graduation projects, and just watching the students get up in front of a... And just watching the students get up in front of some strangers, adults, that they're not always comfortable talking in front of, and doing a really spectacular job, we've seen that. But we may not have seen some of the behind-the-scenes struggles that some of our students have had or that teachers have had within the classroom. And that's really what led us to recommending some changes. We looked at, with it being a graduation requirement, there was a lot of pressure on the students to get it done. And also on the teachers, because they wanted to make sure that this was not keeping those students from walking across the stage and receiving that diploma. So, it felt like that we were not only holding the students accountable, but we were holding the teachers accountable for this project as well, because they were carrying a lot of that burden on themselves. The effect on classroom instruction. We were spending much more time in the classroom working on the graduation project than we initially had anticipated spending on it. Concerns about grading, how much of an impact is this on an English Four grade? An English Four was already a graduation requirement. So, we struggled with a lot of different things. Community support. We talked about the mentors a little bit earlier. We had to reduce that time. But then we still struggled with finding mentors, depending on what a student was working on. And then also getting judges in when it was timed to judge for presentation nights. Many of the times, we kind of went with the minimum. We'd like to have, you know, four or five judges in a room. But a lot of times, we ended up with a minimum of three, because that was all that we could get to come in on those evenings. And then we really thought about meeting the needs of all students. When you kind of have a one-size-fits-all project, even though you may have accommodations through individual plans for a student, the one-size-fits-all wasn't really working for all of our students. And so, those were a lot of, what a lot of our discussions were about. Things that have happened since our initial implementation, we've seen a change in our standards. What we had under the old standard course of study compared to what we are responsible for with a common core, there are a lot of changes within that. And there are a lot of higher, more rigorous standards than we had before. And with us spending a lot of time on the graduation project within the classroom, teachers felt like students were missing out on those common core standards. So, it's kind of, it was a debate within the classroom, do I spend more time getting them ready for this graduation requirement, or more time teaching them what I'm supposed to be responsible for teaching them within the classroom? And that was not something that we anticipated when we adopted the graduation project. We didn't know that we were going to have the common, you know, in 2007, 2008, none of us would have been able to say, common cores come in in five years to be able, we just can't predict the future. The other impact, our high school accountability model. When the high school accountability model was introduced, we were under the understanding that we would get bonus points for doing the graduation project. And while that's not, that's not the reason we did it, that was kind of a bonus to doing the graduation project. Now that we've actually seen the accountability model in action, it's just a yes-or-no box on a form. So, there's really, we don't get any bonus points for doing it, and nothing's taken away from us for not doing it. So, it didn't really benefit us as a school district as much as we thought it would with the accountability model. Now, our proposal is instead of students doing a graduation project, they are going to be doing what we're calling a multi-genre research project. So, you will still see some components of the graduation project within the class, but it's going to have more of a curriculum focus, so that we're not taking away from what the teachers are supposed to be doing when you look at their standards. They'll still be doing a research paper. They will come up with some sort of product. And the students will be doing a presentation. And it does align, if you look at our common core standards, there are standards that fit what those students will be doing. And it gives a lot more flexibility in the hands of the teachers who are touching those students, so that they can address needs as they happen. In fact, we're going to continue to write a research paper in English Three, and then students would do this project in English Four. So, they're actually going to end up with two research papers in high school under our proposal versus the one they were doing in the past. So, we feel like even though we might be taking something away, that we're not lowering our standards for students. But we felt like that you needed this explanation as to why we were making this recommendation. Do you have questions for me or our committee members or principals?
Will there still be a mentorship component, or has that been removed?
It's one of those things that we thought was optional. If a student wanted to, depending on what their project was, if they wanted to work with a mentor and they had somebody available, that they certainly could include that. But that was not something that we were going to mandate with this new project.
But really, other than the project being, or their research being curriculum-related, instead of reaching out to find other things that they might do, you're really maintaining the primary elements, the most important elements of the graduation project within the curriculum as it fits the core.
That's what we feel as a committee.
I think that's extremely important. I'm glad to hear that.
Now, when you talk about, I'm trying to see if it says, write a research. When they complete the project, will they do a presentation?
Yes, they will do a presentation. And we've tried not to mandate as much with our proposed solution, so that teachers have flexibility, as the students could do that presentation within a classroom setting. And we, teachers could invite outside people in, or it may be just other school-related. But we were trying not to fit them into that box that we felt kind of stuck in, so to speak.
You be measuring with that? Rubric or anything about that?
Yes, yes, yes. We have, in fact, several teachers within our school district were doing something similar to this prior to implementation of the graduation project. And so, just like they would, there would be rubrics and consistency among the grading to help the teachers and the students.
So, whenever they do the presentation, is that going to count as a grade? Is that what you're saying? It will or will not?
Right, right. All of those components will count as part of a grade for that student.
And there's two research papers?
Correct. They will write a research paper their junior year and then turn around and write another one their senior year.
What percentage of the committee is in favor of doing it this way? I mean, was that pretty much a consensus of everyone?
Yes, sir. It was a consensus of the committee. They, I didn't mention this, but as, between meetings, their role within the school was to go back, get feedback from their school, so that it didn't seem like it was just our group of 25 that was making that decision. They went back, solicited feedback, and came back, and so that it was a true consensus of what was going on.
This will have to evolve. I needed to tell you that, because it's got some places. And I went, hmm. Because we spent tremendous amount of time making sure that reading, writing, listening, all those things would be the value of all the teachers. Unfortunately, this is coming right back in on English teachers, which I did not want to happen. But that's the way it's happened. So, we'll have to make sure that all the other teachers are teaching all these things. You have to teach the speaking and social studies and science. You don't have to do the writing and social studies and science. You can do research there. Unless we push it out in all those areas, we'll be back to where we were. So, we've got some work to do on this one yet. I do not want this to be the kingdom of English teachers.
One thing too, that I enjoyed the most, and the people that I talked to seemed to, the members of the public, are those presentations in which the public has been able to come out and to see and to be a part of. I know it was hard to get a lot of judges or those. But I do hope that the schools, as they implement the new model, if we go to that, that there'll still be that provision for inviting me or board members or people of the community, or kids who may want to present in front of some judges. Because that was such a highlight, and I thoroughly enjoyed that. And the folks from the community that I talked to really did. The portfolio was gone. Is that?
Right. We felt like with all that the students were doing, that they're really, that product was kind of more encompassing than that they wouldn't necessarily need the portfolio aspect.
But as they do their presentations, if they choose to use items that would be substantiate something equivalent, they can.
Correct, certainly, certainly.
So, if we approve this 3460 a month from now, Number Three, that Dr. Stone alluded to, successful completion of all other requirements mandated by the Board as provided in this policy, that would be encompassed in that?
We are trying not to actually put language in Board policy, because if we're going to change this in the future, I think we don't want to get trapped into doing something in Board policy. And that's why we wanted to let you know, this is what we're doing, and this is the expectation. And between principals and myself and the teachers, we know it's going to happen and there will be follow-up. But we don't necessarily want to get it put black and white in Board policy, and then something happen again. If our standards were to change again in another year or two, then we're back here presenting what the new project may need to be. And so, I think that's why we were trying to keep specific language out of that policy.
I think the Chairman makes a good point, though, that when students see this, they're going to automatically, I think, or parents might, because I remember the battle in 2010 or 2008, that we had when we implemented this. So, you know, whatever language we use, I think students and parents need to realize that this may be, we may not have this senior project now, but there is something else in its place. So, and that may be the beauty of language in the policy. Maybe not. It could be procedures, but just, because I do, I am a little worried how the media report this, that we are doing away with the senior project when we really aren't. It's morphing into something a little bit different, may not be called senior project, but it's still, maybe, it actually may have more rigor. It sounds like it has a lot more rigor to it. So, I don't want the students and juniors thinking next year, oh, my gosh, well, you're out of it.
Well, and before the juniors left for the summer, or before they are going to leave for the summer, I know our days at the high school are numbered. They have been told in their rising senior meetings that they will still have something. We knew this was coming up and that they were told that they may see some changes in the graduation project per se, but there would still be something that they would be expected to do. Or we worded it very nicely, so that they knew that there were still expectations for them if changes were to be made. And so, that we could address students who were going to work on the graduation project over the summer. So, we have made, we are working one-on-one with them. And if there are students that are in the process of and want to continue, we'll be working one-on-one with them so that they can finish what they've started.
That was what I was just about to ask, because I know some young people get something started their junior year and would like to carry on with that particular project, and certainly for the first year. Next year's juniors are a little bit different story.
Correct.
Because they'll be starting with the new rubrics and so forth like that.
Correct.
For the kids who are sort of partway along the trail at this point, I would hate to say, oh, well, forget it, go do something else.
So, we're going to be working one-on-one with students. Some will want to continue working on what they've started with, and some will want to start something new. So, we're going to be flexible.
Good, thank you.
Do you want to introduce the members of the committee who are here?
I certainly can. We have Phyllis Bentley from South Caldwell. We have Courtney Rabenowitz from High Brighton. Jeff Link sat on the committee from West Caldwell. David Caldwell from High Brighton. Kathy McDonald. I know Mr. Peak was in here, he's been in and out, but he also sat on the committee as well.
I think the way that it's worded here provides that flexibility. So, I think this addresses what you're talking about here, to be able to work from this sentence Number Three that I alluded to a while ago. I think it provides the flexibility to do these kinds of things that they were talking about. And we're not actually panning ourselves into a corner.
One thing, just to be picky, like my favorite administrator there, I noticed we may need to strike the word "other" in Line Three, because we've eliminated the high school graduation project, and it says, and all other. That's the first one. But that may be a word we need to cross out, and I'll leave you in charge of that.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to recommend that this be placed on 30-day comment period.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve for a 30-day comment period, Policy 3460, graduation requirements?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we place Policy 3460, graduation requirements, on a 30-day comment period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for those on the committee for your hard work and being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Moving along with the agenda, I'd like to recognize at this time, Dr. Trish Johnson is Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource Services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Stone, I have three items for your attention this evening. And I'm happy and delighted to say that one of them is not the 25% teacher tenure elimination plan that we put on 30-day comment period last month.
Thank you, Judge Hopgood.
Thank you. We're very delighted with that. Item Exhibit Three includes usual and customary items that are presented for your information only, and they require no action by the Board. Exhibit Four includes usual and customary personnel items that require your action. I respectfully request approval of these items as they have been presented.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters as has been presented?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. Dr. Hop.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the usual and customary personnel matters presented to us this evening be approved.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
And Exhibit Five includes our student transfer request recommendations for 2014-15. Since your last Board meeting, we had 77 requests for student transfers. Of the 77 received, 76 meets established Board criteria. Respectfully recommend approval of the 76 transfer requests. If approved this evening, that brings the 2014-15 transfer student requests as to date, 339. I respectfully recommend approval of these requests.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2014-15 student transfers as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call to the podium, Dr. Jeff Church, Assistant Superintendent for Auxiliary Services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Stone. You have before you Exhibit Six, a request for a lease on Walker Stadium. If you've been by Davenport School and Walker Stadium over the last couple of years, you've noticed a lot of improvements. We have been leasing this on an annual basis to Todd and Kelly Hawkins over the past two years. And the improvements are significant enough that they're asking that we extend that lease for a five-year period as they look to improve and bring in. It really looks good to have baseball come back to Walker Stadium. So, this lease has been edged, drafted at for us. I respectfully request that you approve the lease for Walker Stadium.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the lease as we have had opportunity to review for Walker Stadium?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion we approve the lease for Walker Stadium as Exhibit Six.
Second? Okay. Any questions? Not any plans to put lights up there, though?
No, not at this point. Not on, not through us.
So, this is the summer wooden bat league?
It is, yes, sir. It is. And it could be, it's like 12-year-olds and up. Could be maybe some college age also.
Oh, can be as young as 12?
Could be as young.
Okay.
So, it's good to hear that bat crack again.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Exhibit Seven is an easement request, a grant of easement request from Piedmont National Natural Gas. Currently, we have gas, the meter for High Brighton High School is located at the theater, and they're going to be running gas from High Brighton up to the new middle school. And they're asking that we grant an easement over to Highway 90. And I respectfully request that we approve that. That would allow the community up Highway 90 to have the opportunity at some point to have natural gas. So, I respectfully request that you approve this easement as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the easement for Piedmont Natural Gas. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the easement for Piedmont Natural Gas through the new William Lenoir Middle School property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before you vote, let me add more information. Being that we are purchasing, being as we're building the school, this also has to be approved by our county commissioners as well. So, this is one half of the approval process.
Well, we have two of them here tonight. We just need one more.
One more, don't we?
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Stone, back in April, asked me to provide a brief update of the progress of the William Lenoir Middle Schools. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint just a little bit and sort of show you from the beginning up until one day last week. As you can see here, this is, this was taken back in March and this is the entrance road as we're coming in and you'll see it progress, but this is across the road from the softball field down at High Brighton High School. Going on up, I just, I took that picture off of Panther Trail, looking across the cornfield and in, can't really see it here, but you can sort of see the woods thinning out at this point back in March, March 21st. There's some work going on at driveway entrance at High Brighton. This is looking across the property. That will be, the ridge that you see will be taken out and that will be the soccer field. And then, we're looking right there at the, the building will be right in front of this picture. Again, this is the site back in March. It's unbelievable as you, as we've moved through this, the amount of dirt that is coming out of here. And the dirt, as you know, the soil is balanced where we're able to move, just move it to another spot. This is standing up near the theater. That's a fabric that's going in on the entrance to help stabilize the soils right there at the entrance to Wildcat Trail as it's coming up from the softball field. Again, filling in. And you can see just as that road progresses and you can see the timestamp on that. And this is, they're coming down, if you're coming up into the site, you can see under the, behind the trees, the cornfield, that is the retaining pond. If you've not been up there and seen that, it's a pretty big-sized pond to handle the water, the runoff that comes through on the property. Again, that's looking across the site. This would be standing in the back corner, probably in the banding course area, looking out across the front. The main drive will be coming sort of in the center of that picture right there. This is standing at the corner. This will actually be cut down. We're sort of standing in the road to the bus parking lot here and as you can see, this is looking across over to the football field. Those are the mobile units that behind High Brighton High School. Bus parking lot, bus driveway will be coming through those. Those will be, we, actually, we sold one of them. We put it up for auction and it went off, it sold over the weekend. The little brown one that you see was sold. The other two will be demolished and that will be starting next week. This comes back on Highway 90. We're looking over, we're actually standing on Highway 90 at this point. This is where the road will come out and we're standing along the road across from the Moose Lodge Road. So, this is the view coming in and that's back mid-April. And then, this is another view and you can see the bank, you can see the steepness of the bank going down Highway 90. There'll be another lane that's added to that, so it'll be built up. Some of the dirt that you saw on the other end will come over here to have a decal lane. Again, this one you can't really see, it's just showing the amount of dirt. There's about a 20-foot wall of dirt there that's been, that's come down. That's another, that's the settlement pond again. That's some of the equipment working through on the settlement pond. You can see where it's been graded out a little bit on the other end where the road's coming through. That's, the main focus is to get the pad in and that's get everything on finished grade. This is again, back at the front of the entrance where they're continuing to build it up. There you can see some of the dirt. That's overlooking, you can see the light for the football stadium. That's kind of right over top of those mobile units now and you can see just in that little bit of picture how much it's come down and it'll go down quite a bit from that point also. The entrance road is paved, just a temporary pavement or subpaved. You can see that's the building pad, that's getting everything ready. If you've not been in that direction, that is a beautiful view looking back, looking at the hills. Another picture of the building pad. Another picture, this was a couple of weeks ago, building pad. That is probably the seventh or eighth grade wing at that point. Another one, if you can see the dot, I took that picture because you can see the dot kind of in the middle, that's going to be approximately where the front door is going to be. Let me back up. Before we, before we move forward, I apologize in advance, one thing that you don't do is surprise your superintendent. So, this is a surpriser superintendent. James came up, what, maybe first of April and said, can we do this? And I said, yes, keep it a secret, don't tell the boss. So, our technology department is unbelievable. They are, we've got an awesome technology department and you will see what they've got. This will really impress you. So, look forward to it. In just about a minute, so I hope you enjoy it. This is from May 25th through today. It's time lapse.
My goodness. Oh, how neat. Yes. Oh. That's amazing.
Great job. Just wish it was that fast. We do have one more, it's about 30 seconds, just a different view from a different camera. But, this is all from our technology department and they're just, they do a really, really fantastic job and we're proud of them.
It looks like you've been really lucky not hitting rock so far.
We've not, we've not. That's good. That's a plus.
Yeah.
That's a quick lunch break.
This ought to be a lesson to anybody who goes over there to do any kind of mischief or something, you're on the camera. You may show up.
Thank you all.
Thank you, James.
And thank you for keeping the board informed and sending us updates on it. We appreciate that. Next, we have our finance director, Mr. David Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Stone, have three budget amendments for your consideration and I, number 23, 24, and 25. 23 is State Public School Fund, 24 is Current Expense Fund, 25 is Federal Grants Fund. If approved, it'll bring the total budget for Caldwell County Schools to $118,518,943.96. It's my recommendation that these be approved as submitted.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendments as has been presented to us for the State Public School Fund, the Local Current Expense Fund, and the Federal Grants Fund?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amendments as presented to the State Public School Fund, to the Local Current Expense Fund, and also to the Federal Grants Fund.
Okay, is there a second? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next item on the agenda is, the board has had opportunity to look over our schedule for meetings for next year and there's been some feedback in regards to that and there's, that has been adjusted and you've had opportunity to look at the revised schedule for our meetings for next year. Do I hear a motion that we approve the Board of Education meeting schedule for 2014-2015?
Is the one changed December 8th, changed December 1st?
Yes.
Right, right. That's state law. So... Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2014-15 Board of Education meeting schedule as it has been amended.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next item on the agenda is, the board has had opportunity to look over our schedule for meetings for next year and there's been some feedback in regards to that and there's, that has been adjusted and you've had opportunity to look at the revised schedule for our meetings for next year. Do I hear a motion that we approve the Board of Education meeting schedule for 2014-2015?
Is the one changed December 8th, changed December 1st?
Yes.
Right, right. That's state law. So... Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2014-15 Board of Education meeting schedule as it has been amended.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So, that's the schedule that we will abide by for next year. Next, we have superintendent's report. Do you have anything you need to add?
You have in front of you an article that Dottie called my attention to on the Sunday paper.
Yesterday's.
Yesterday's Shard Observer. The lead article is about a student Ricky, how do you pronounce his last name, Dottie? Rubio?
Let me check it again.
Rubio. Rubio, who is a part of the Carolina Advising Corps, which we've had in this county since 2010. These are two students. We've been particularly working with the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and we have two students who have come, they spend two years with us and they worked with our students at all of our high schools to get them prepared for college, for the university system. They help them with the financial aid, they help them with the applications, they do just about everything and we have noticed since 2010 that it's creeping up slowly, but the number of our students who are going to a four-year university is increasing, which is sort of what they are, their main purpose here is. But, they also do, they do collaborate with the community college. For a student who may want to go to the community college, they also help those transition advisors from the college. But, interesting article and it's going to be expanded, but we're very fortunate, we've had it, one of the first systems to have that a long time ago in 2010, so works well. And it's just nice to see, if you read his article down toward the end, he talks about High Brighton and West and how much impact he feels like he's having there at those schools. So, we certainly are very proud of that. Came out of Bill Gates Scholarship Grant several years back, 2010. So, Dottie, thank you for calling that to my attention and I wanted to share it with the board.
Is the author Stephen Martin, do we know?
No, that's a different one. I noticed that too, so...
The other thing is we have, of course, we are now, we are closing in on the exams. We have two and a half days left of school. Thursday, schools will be released about half-day, sometime around the lunch hour and we'll be starting our four-day work week the week after. The hours at the education center will be from 7:00 to 5:30, I believe, Jeff, and that will run until the middle of August. So, we'll start doing that.
Okay, and as we all know, Thursday is graduation night as well and we all have our places that we're going to be and I hope that each of you can, can come by bows for the project graduation afterwards at 10 o'clock. Stay as long as you can. It lasts until 3 o'clock. But, Dr. Stone said he was going to be there until the end.
Till 11 maybe.
Okay, and then our retirement banquet is going to be next Tuesday, the 17th, at the Civic Center and that'll be at 11:30. Also, we will have our special budget session and that's going to be here at the education center at 5 o'clock on June 30th. So, those are the announcements. Once again, I'd like to thank our commissioners, Vice Chairman Jeff Branch and Mike LeBrosse for being here tonight and we appreciate all that you do for Caldwell County and Caldwell